Good evening, thank you for joining us. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening Director Grenwald will read the Land Acknowledgement.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan Peoples and the Kallits Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. All right, first on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda. We'll entertain a motion for that.
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right, next up.
Jackie. Sorry. Director Weatherspoon.
All right, next is Special Recognition. It's still January, it's still Board Appreciation Month. All right, we're going to call Craig up for that. Hi Craig.
Hello. We wanted to share with you this video. Staff members and students across the district wanted to tell you how much they appreciate you and they also wanted, some of our younger students, wanted to share with you what they appreciate about school, which of course you support, so thank you.
We're the passing crew of Evergreen Public Schools' beginning.
Thank you to the school board for supporting the arts.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Hey, I appreciate you guys, you guys are the best. This school is top tier, I love this school a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, school board, for supporting music programs.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to the school board for volunteering your time and putting in the work for our schools.
My name is Craig, I'm in 5th grade. I like PE because it helps our bodies get strong.
Hi, my name is Mateo and I'm in 5th grade. And what I like most about this school is recess because I can talk with my friends. And I am proud to be in the dual lingual program because if I don't know something in English, I can say it in Spanish.
Hi, my name is Caitlin. Hi, my name is Kay, I'm in the 5th grade. And I like the teachers because they're nice and they set me on good life decisions.
Hi, my name is Kaden and I'm in 5th grade and I like math.
Hi, my name is Sevea, I'm into 5th grade and I like writing.
Hi, my name is David, I'm in 5th grade and I like math.
I'd like to give my thanks and regards to the school board. They gave legacy of this beautiful new building and honestly, I'm having the time of my life here. This school has really helped me, so I'd like to thank the school board for really helping this school.
We would like to express our gratitude to the Evergreen Public Schools' school board for their support of the Envision Evergreen Facilities bond and making this beautiful school possible for the Burton community.
And thank you so much for coming in, for those who were able to come in during our holiday vacation to help unpack so many boxes. Thank you, we appreciate you.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Gracias.
Spasiba.
Shee shee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to wave at them. They're so cute.
Thank you Craig, that was fun.
That was fun.
All right, next up is our Board Consent Agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move for approval of the Board Consent Agenda.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, next up is the Superintendent Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, next up is, we have a couple of presentations this evening. The first one is the Bond Sale Authorization. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Boyd.
Yeah, we are, it's a pleasure to have Mark Pressing here. Works for the Educational Services District and has been our guide to the side in helping us navigate the world of bonds. And I think he's going to give us a little walk down memory lane and talk about what we're doing currently with the remainder of the funds to support construction in the district.
Great, thank you. President Bochum and I. There we go, let's try it again. President Bochum and members of the board and Superintendent Boyd. It's nice to be here this evening. We had a bond sale back in August and at the time, things got pretty busy so we didn't get a chance to do the normal update to the board in person. So I thought it'd be nice to kind of update that. And I thought it would be, since the faces have changed since this was passed in 2018, just a little bit of history of how this came about. We started the planning for this bond issue in 2016. It takes a couple of years easily to get this. John Erickson was the superintendent at that time. And they identified approximately $700 million or more in needs of the district and to all the different schools. Superintendent Erickson got a group together of local business leaders and said, you know, can we really ask for that much money? Or should we go to multiple elections, say $350 million each time, which would be kind of the more of the normal course of doing this? And they said, look, the economy is good right now. If you can get approval for that, we'll go through recession at some point. At that point, you will have the money and you wouldn't pass another bond issue and you can keep spending the money on the construction projects to support the local economy with these projects. So that ended up being a great strategy. It was approved by 63% of the voters in 2018. And now you think about that, looking back from 2016, what happened since then? We wouldn't have got another bond authorization in 2020. Everybody just ran away from the ballot, pretty much at that point. And the district has been doing these construction projects and investing in the local economy at a time when things weren't going so well. And also at a time when prices were low, lower, and interest rates were low. So it really ended up being a great success story. So, see if I can get my slideshow working here. Okay. So, what I thought we'd talk about, but what I'd really like to do is answer questions you have. So along the way, if you have questions, please interrupt me. And we'll talk about what's going on in the bond market. Review of the goals we set out back in 2018 and kind of where we've gone since then. Things have changed and kind of where we, you know, the results stayed. And then kind of next steps going forward. So as we all know, interest rates have been rising quite a bit over the last year. The good news is, we sold most of the district's bonds back when interest rates were low. We sold everything except for $95 million. And then we sold 60 million of that, 95 million in August. The reason we didn't sell the full 95 million in August is bonds are a little bit different than a home mortgage in that we can adjust your payments to be what you want to be based on your other financing goals, whether it be operating levies, capital levy, technology levy, that sort of thing. And so we thought, well, the district can be back up in the ballot in 2025 for the operating levies and technology levies. Let's wait and hold back this 35 million and see if we can use it to strategically provide some additional support for those levies by lowering the tax rates, for example, in those years. So we thought, well, we'll know more in 2024 than we do in 2022. So let's just hold back a little bit more. So it'd be similar to saying, well, I'm going to need a car in two years. Could I make my home mortgage a little less in two years so I can, my payments would be the same? So it'd be kind of the same strategy. But so when you look at this graph, even though interest rates have risen, we're still really at historic lows, except for that dip where we sold all the bonds right in the last couple of years. When voters approved the bonds in 2018, they were told that the bond tax rate would be approximately $1.77 per thousand. We've been maintaining that until this year. This year, the district's assessed values have grown up, gone so much. As you have homes, I'm sure you know that the value of your homes have gone up quite a bit. And so with Superintendent Boyd and Jennifer Jacobson, we had this discussion, let's let the tax rate drop down so tax bills don't go up and keep the tax amounts more the same, so give taxpayers some relief. Again, I talked about the selling of $60 million. We renewed the district's credit rating with Moody's Investor Service. It's AA3, what they call, it's a very good credit rating. And one of the things they noted is the district's strong management team is a strength for the district. So Superintendent Boyd and Jennifer Jacobson can take a bow for that and kind of managing. It also goes to you as a board, what they look very carefully at the district finances, as you'd imagine. And the fund balance is one of the big things. So maintaining an appropriate fund balance for the district is really important in that regard. We used a different form of sale this time. We used what's called a negotiated sale, where we brought the underwriters in and negotiated with them through the process. Because of volatility in the markets with the COVID and everything, and things fluctuating quite a bit, I think we'd really benefit from that pre-marketing effort for them, so. You can see from this graph, these are the district's tax rates. And we have the green bars being the operating levies, the blue being the bonds are outstanding, and then the yellow bonds, kind of where we sold for this piece. And then we'll have some other ones coming up. But you can see how the tax rates have generally been declining over time. And we want to manage that, again, as you go into the 2025 election. So some of the things that have happened from, since 2016, when we were planning into 2018 approval, assessed values of the district have grown quite rapidly and more than we had projected. We try to be conservative in that. Interest rates are lower, so we try to be conservative in that. And we're now able to, and we sold bonds faster than we thought we would. So all of those things provided a little extra interest earnings and got the projects done sooner. So really a great success, I think, to this point. And now we've, you know, we've only got 35 million left to go. And only, it's a lot of money, $35 million, but of 695, most of that's done. And John pointed out earlier, you know, talking with Jennifer, this is over $800 million that have been invested in the local economy from this project. It's a big deal. It's a really, really big deal. So you can see the bond sales in 2018. We had a true interest cost, it's like your overall cost of borrowing, like your APR of 3.18%, and then 2.4, 2.25. This last one was higher because of rising rates at 4.68. And then, you know, we'll see what happens on the next one. I'm thinking, we probably would have all liked to have borrowed at any of those rates anywhere along the line. I wish I could have had, you know, home mortgage at 2.25%. But, so where we'll go from here is I'll work with your finance team in the spring typically to set the debt service fund budget. And that's when we start thinking about what your bond payments are going to do, kind of for the next two years. We'll look at that, we'll get back together in the fall of 2023 and evaluate the budget. And you may end up recertifying a different amount that's in the budget based on what our goals are. We'll again, work with identifying the cash flow projection for the projects, make sure that we're getting the money when it's needed for that. And then we'll start planning for another bond sale in 2024, which is a year from now. It's going fast. And your action will be kind of planning for future funding needs as well for the operating and technology levies in 2024, taking action on that fall of '24 for a spring '25 election. So again, we'll be dovetailing the bond measure to kind of help those goals with those levies. For example, if we could make the bonds maybe 10, say 10 cents per thousand lower, '25, well maybe you could add 10 cents per thousand to the technology levy and not have the taxpayers. So that'd be the type of thing we'll be looking at. So that's really all, I have the detail from all these projections in the back. But again, I just wanted to mainly provide an update, let you know where we're, a little bit of history. And you missed the best part of the whole board meeting. I like talking about bonds and I know I'm a little unusual, but anyway. So it's really been a pleasure to work with you as a board and through this long process. And, you know, we'll have one more to go and see where we go from there.
Thank you, do we have questions?
I would like to get a copy of that, your presentation, if possible.
Do that.
Could you send it over to Lori and she'll give it to the board? There's some interest, I think there were some interesting data points in there that... What?
I think we have it in there.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, I know we have it in the PDF.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't go down far enough.
And if there's anything else you'd want, you know, any other questions running through Superintendent Boyd? We can get you whatever information you'd like on it. It's been a really interesting story.
Thank you, Mark. We really appreciate your expertise along the way, it's been invaluable. In the short time that I've worked with you here, I had the pleasure of working with him in another district too, on a bond. And so nobody's more knowledgeable in the state. And so we're happy and thankful for your help and support.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wouldn't be a bond sale without Mark.
All right, next up is District Enrollment Projections, another presentation. I think Sue Steinbrenner is going to come up and make our introductions.
And while Sue is stepping up to the plate here, just a reminder how we got to the point of getting the, doing the demographers study of our enrollment. It was a future topic from Director Weatherspoon was wondering. We had talked about the enrollment loss and we really felt like we had anecdotal reasons why we thought our enrollment had dipped. And so we thought we'd bring in an expert. And so Sue will introduce our demographer there and we'll give you a little bit more detail. And then at the end, we're going to, we're going to be in a work session to be able to answer questions and have a back and forth with him as well. But we wanted to put, get this into the public record and put it out there and then be able to have a more informal conversation at the end.
Oh, you just took all my thunder away, John. And actually, John won't be able to stay till the end, but Jennifer and I will be able to answer the questions. So I'm pleased to introduce John Spickeland from Johnson Economics, here to talk a little bit about the economic and demographic factors that are impacting enrollment. And you should have in your packet the full report there. He was going to go over some of the highlights. So John's been with Johnson Economics for 10 years. He is a demographer, works with a lot of public agencies, private developers, kind of helping them project financial and pricing analysis and also does a lot of demographic projections for districts here in Washington and Oregon.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, board and Superintendent Boyd. Like Sue said, I'm just going to try to hit the highlights from the written report that we did. I should point out that this is not projections, this is not a forecast of enrollment. We haven't done that, that was not part of the assignment. It's more just providing some context around the declines that we've seen to date. But I will give some pointers as to where I think enrollment will go, at least over the near term. So this is just an overview of total enrollment over the past 10 years, comparing the county, which is the top line, to Evergreen. And as you can see, the trend is weaker in Evergreen. But even on a county level, we have seen declines since 2016. So there are things going on here. And we see this outside of Clark County, outside of Washington State as well. This one compares the enrollment, the change in enrollment over the past 10 years in the different school districts in Clark County. And as you can see, Evergreen is the line at the bottom. So the weakest growth if you count total number of students lost. But of course, you're the biggest school district, so if I'd done this chart in percentage terms, it wouldn't have looked quite as bad. But still, declines in Evergreen, declines in Ball Ground and Vancouver. Then there's a few school districts with a flat trend. And the only two districts with growth over the past 10 years are Camas and Ridgefield. And if you guys have been to Ridgefield in recent years and seen how many new homes are building there, you would understand why. This is enrollment by grade in 2021. So you have kindergarten on the left-hand side and high school, grade 12, on the right-hand side. So the point I wanted to make here is you have pretty large classes on the high school level. They are graduating. And then you have new small classes coming in at the kindergarten level. So your total enrollment is going down every year. It's a net loss every year. And already from this, you can kind of, you can guess what the trend is going to be for the next years as well. You have small classes coming in, big classes going out. This is an age, the age distribution in Clark County. So you have the ages down on the bottom there. And the only things, I don't know if I can make point, yes, I can. Here, you have a lot of kids in the 10 to 15 age group. So this would be the middle and high school level. And then fewer and fewer people are, lower populations for every age down towards zero. And this is why you're seeing the kindergarten classes coming in being smaller than they were the previous year. And so again, now you can extrapolate what you think the kindergarten enrollment would be over the next few years. Most likely is lower than it's been recently. This shows households by age in the county in 2020, no, sorry, 2010, it's a light blue, and 2021 is a dark blue. And these two age groups, 25 to 34 and 35 to 44, this is where, this is where most of the family formation takes place typically. This is where they have their first child. This is probably, most of the parents of your students, I'm assuming it's going to be in this age group. Also some here. So the strongest growth in the county has been households in the senior segment, empty nesters, but also pretty strong here in the family segments. So you would think that you would get a lot more births and a lot more school kids because of that. But when we look at the total number of births in the county, that's actually trending down. It was going up a little bit around 2014, 15, 16, and then it's been trending down again despite very strong population growth and household growth in the key age groups. When you look at the different colors, you can see it broken down by age groups. So the steepest declines are among the youngest mothers. And it's a little funny, it's not very scientific, but one of the theories that are discussed of why you're seeing fewer births there is actually that in that age group, they're no longer hanging out in person as much as they used to. It's more social media and over the internet on their smartphones. And so they make fewer babies because of that. Here's another reason, which we have some data on. So this is the housing market, home prices in Clark County and then the region. The average increase, the average annual increase of the past 10 years is 10% per year. That's the price increase. So we went from down, so 10 years ago, under $200,000, and then last year, $480,000. So obviously, this narrows the pool of people who are able to buy a home. Every year, that pool shrinks. So that's one factor. And the other factor is back here in 2005, '06, '07, first half of '08, it was very easy for young couples to buy a home. You could actually just state your income, they had stated income loans. I was offered one of those loans myself, I didn't take it. But you can, you could get no interest, no, sorry, interest-only loans, state your income. I knew a guy who made $14 an hour. He bought a $600,000 home in Camas, big, nice home. Today, that would probably be worth $1.23 million because he was able to service the interests with his small income. And because now they had, him and his wife now, they had the house for it, they had the yard for it. They decided to start a family right then. And that probably wouldn't have happened today because they wouldn't have been able to buy that home today. In 2008 and '09, we had a recession and we had a financial overhaul with stricter credit requirements, higher credit scores required, more down, bigger down payment, more income. And when incomes are, sorry, when the home prices are going up 10% per year, that's a lot faster than wages and incomes. Those are, people are not able to ever kind of make up a gap and get into the housing market. And this is that age group, 25 to 34, where the family formation usually takes place. It still is where the first births typically take place. These are the homeowners, the homeowner households in, this is on a metro level. The only growth since 2013 really is in the $150,000-plus income range. There's been declines below $100,000. So still a downward trend for households in that age group earning less than $100,000 in terms of number of homeowners in the region. The opposite for the apartment market, strong growth in this age group because this is what they can afford and this is what we're building for that segment. And so even a lot of houses with pretty high incomes end up renting apartments. And there's not a problem with apartments, but we just know statistically, they're much less likely to have children when they live in apartments than when they have, especially when they have their own single-family home that they own. And this is in that same age group. This is what we see in terms of household formation or household composition. We have a strong increase over the past 15 years in two adult households in this age group. Even relatively strong increase in three adult households. That would be a lot of roommates, but declines in families, small families and mid-sized and large families. So these charts are on the regional level. Those don't exist on the school district level, but here is a chart on a school district level. So this is comparing households in 2010 to 2021. The first column is 2010, second is 2021. The red is going to be renters, the blue is going to be owners. So again, if you look at this 25 to 34 age group, there's no increase in homeowners in that age group in the district, but there's a pretty strong increase in renters. And they will primarily be apartment renters, that's what we built. There's been a decline in the 34 to 44 age group, both among renters and owners, which is interesting. They've probably taken some of their, you know, their kids with them in that process of leaving the school district. Decline in homeowners in the next age group, 45 to 54, which is even more interesting. And then the only growth among homeowners is 55+, especially 65+. And so this is something we see all over the region. These are the ones that have the equity, the ability to buy a home. But it is still, there's some unusual things here. And so we didn't have the ability to dig really deep into this here in the school districts, but one of the, one of the things that might be going on here is the type of housing you have. I know much of the housing was built in the '90s, pretty large homes, kind of expensive, especially if you compare to Vancouver School District, larger and more expensive. And the 90s homes don't appeal usually as well to the younger segments as newer or older homes. So that could be one of the reasons you see it's the middle-aged plus, they're buying these homes. They're more okay with the style, that might be a factor, it's a guess really. Other things going on here is if you compare to Vancouver and Camas, historic downtowns have seen a kind of a renaissance. People want to be kind of close to those downtown areas. We know Camas School District has attracted a lot of people from Portland, a lot of families from Portland. What they say is they love the downtown, they love the lake and the forest and the trails and things. So I think it's a mix of the type of homes you have, the price of the homes, the kind of the amenities and the community that have contributed to this declining trend among families and schoolchildren. So thinking about the future, again, back to the enrollment by grade level. Most likely, we'll continue to see new kindergarten classes coming in, lower numbers than the previous year. It might be, you know, some variations from year to year, but that should be the trend based on what we're seeing right now. This could change if a lot of new homes are built in the school district. This map has all the residential projects, as far as we know, in the pipeline in really in the county. And you do have a lot of housing projects, but it's mostly multifamily. Some of this could change, there might be a lot of townhomes in some of these, which they do have families. It's a little too early to say exactly, will the number of new homes outweigh this other trend possibly? Should also mention that there could be regulatory changes that change some things about homeownership. I think this affordability crisis is grabbing attention of politicians and they're getting more and more willing to do something, even if it may be increasing the risk in the financial market possibly. And we'll see where that goes. So that's what I had. I'm sorry if it was a negative outlook, but I'm just an economist. It's kind of my job now. Do you guys have any questions?
Do we have questions for John?
Do we have questions for John?
Probably dozens, but I'll defer to the workshop and I can pose them there. I did a...
Maybe anything specific to the graphs that he put together?
Yeah, I was looking at the households, renters and owners and that comparison of 11 years.
Is it this one?
It's that one, yes. I've got it on my screen here too. It's, I heard someone comment to me a while back that Evergreens area, Clark County's area is going from bedroom community to retirement community in many ways, and the data seems to support that claim.
Yes, and the retirees like to be close to where the services are and where the hospital is. We see that, they say that. So I think that could be one reason why you see a strong increase in retirees here. Yeah, it's true, it's the lower tax or the lack of income tax, the access to outdoor recreation. We've also seen increase, people coming from Portland with the riots that drove some of the retirees out this way. So, yes, definitely. But we do have strong employment growth in Clark County as well. Very strong compared to the other counties in the region. And it's changing, becoming more diverse, more kind of urban in profile. So I think will also attract younger individuals, younger families as well, so.
Thank you. What would you say are the top three in order of the most, the most significant reasons for the decline in enrollment? The top one, two and three?
Yeah, one would be the population, the births over the last few years. So five years after the births have happened, that's when you guys see it in kindergarten enrollment. So it would be the population distribution, the births, which in turn is driven by access to family-friendly housing. And then it would be the housing composition of Evergreen, the types and size of homes you have. And then the amenities or services, services then that appeal maybe to retirees more than the young households.
Did you have anything, Victoria?
My wheels are turning.
We'll have this again on our workshop that we can have.
I just wanted to say thank you because this is what I was looking for. This is what I was interested in, so thank you. Thank you.
It actually refutes some of the, some of the things that we had thought. And puts those as minor variables rather than major variables.
All right, next up is our superintendent report, Superintendent Boyd.
Thank you, Director Bocanegra. So just a few things. One, I mentioned at a previous board meeting of the dangers of fentanyl. It's been widely publicized lately and we, a couple of months ago, had a presentation by Clark County Sheriff that really alarmed us. And so we're, I want to make sure that we're continually putting this front of the public that fentanyl is dangerous. These are not pharmacists or scientists manufacturing this drug and very small amounts can kill. And so, once we had that presentation, even before it hit the media, we went to work, created a website to share information about the dangers of it. We increased the access to Narcan, and Narcan is a counteragent to fentanyl. And so we purchased a bunch of that and we're getting that out all throughout the district. We've also, in partnership with Vancouver Public Schools, Vancouver Police Department and Clark County Sheriff's Office, have two evening nights planned, two fentanyl awareness nights. One's at Fort Vancouver, February 7th and at 7 o'clock, and one will be at Evergreen High School at 7 o'clock PM. And those are, we'll have Clark County Sheriff officers and giving us information for our families. We'll widely publicize that to all of our families and staff to be able to attend that should they want to. And we're also having conversations with our teaching, learning, equity and staff along with our folks from safety and security to start figuring out how we can educate the students in a more comprehensive manner about the dangers of fentanyl as well. Another thing that we're working on, it's come up at the board, is the HIB process. So in an effort to streamline the process for complaining, monitoring and serving our families, we've created a new electronic HIB process. And so we have clarified roles and responsibilities. We'll be conducting ongoing training for administration, but part of the challenge is with the, you know, 23,000 students and multiple complaints, the monitoring of it. And so this will allow us a way to monitor on the backend the complaints that are coming in and making sure that we're following protocol, triaging and moving those complaints that are of most concern to the top and that we're, have a systems in place for making sure that we're following up in the way that we need to to serve our families. We'll talk a little bit more about the legislative front. I've testified twice for two different transportation-related pieces. One, the governor's budget, which is woefully short of providing us fully funding for transportation. And Monica, Representative Stonier has a bill out related to transportation. So you know our gap for funding transportation, just getting our students to and from school is about $1.8 million. We are reimbursed about $30,000 or $30,000 to $35,000 for transporting special education students, students with special needs and our foster care students. And that expense for that is around $300,000. So Monica's bill is probably the one that addresses things most profoundly. So I've gone in and have testified pro on that. I know that we have Directors Bradford and Perkins and Bocanegra going to the day on the hill. So we'll be rubbing elbows and trying to continue to advocate for transportation funding and special education funding, which is underfunded by about $10 million in our district. Several bills out there that haven't kind of gotten all the way through. So we'll have, we're watching and monitoring and our lobbyist Melissa is helping us, support us through that work. Making strategic plan, we're making great progress on our plan. We've got our mission statement, vision for student success statement, our values, our theory of action documents drafted. So it's really coming together fast and in an exciting way. And I know a couple of the board directors are on the core planning team. And so I just want you to be aware of all the things going on behind the scenes related to that should come in to focus pretty well for us to start taking drafts out and socializing our plan sometime in March. So we're really excited now to look at strategies, goals and strategies and then metrics to make sure that we're monitoring what we aspire for for our students according to our vision for student success. Last thing, we met with, another partnership with Vancouver Public Schools and WSU. We met to discuss next steps with the LEAD program. So the LEAD program is Leaders of Equity and Advancing Diversity Program. It's a program that is a cohort of leaders of color in a professional development to get their principal certification. So we have three Vancouver teachers in that cohort right now and we're going to work for the next cohort to aggressively recruit for more in the effort to do what we know is important, and that's the diversification of our workforce. Just the budget timeline, we've, we'll be launching a thought exchange for our community toward the end of this month to be able to get feedback. And we're asking a simple question is, what are you, what's important to you as we cut our budget by, you know, 15 to 20 million dollars? And so just as a reminder, it's an interactive survey where people rate other people's thoughts. So you get not the static information, but you get a more prioritized feedback around what's important to people. We've met with our principals and talked to them, got some feedback from them. Our senior directors of school supervision led a process with them. They've reported to our top leadership and we're taking that into consideration, doing the thought exchange, and of course, we'll be keeping the board apprised along the way. That's my report.
Thank you. All right, next up is department updates, teaching and learning and equity update, Clarissa Hightower.
Hi there, how are you?
I'm great, I'm full of gratitude. I got some people that I want to introduce you to if you all can make your way to the front. Let's come right here. Yeah, yeah. So I have the distinct pleasure to introduce to you this evening the students, parents, staff and community members of our district Equity Advisory Committee. These very wonderful people are dedicated and are volunteering their time to advise us on issues of equity as well as surface some things that they love to co-design solutions around. And so I love putting faces with names. And because when I started our first equity committee, we were mostly virtual, I said, I've got to get our board to meet our members. And so here's how we're going to do this so that we're not hearing to a midnight, but that you also get to know them a little bit. They're going to share three things with you. Their name, the schools that they're associated with so that you all can, yep. And then the stakeholder group that they'll be representing. And then they'll pass it along to the next person, okay? All right, we're going to start with the first person. Ah, here we go, all right.
Good evening, I'm Andy Schoonover of the Principal Legacy High School. I represent school administration. I'm also a parent in the district with students at Illahi and Chehalah.
Hello, my name is Olivia Newkirk and I go to Union High School and I represent a student.
Hi, I'm Kalise Hightower. I will be associated with Union High School and representing the student stakeholder group.
Good evening, my name is Janine Mills and I'm a classified staff at Legacy High School.
My name is Marissa Valencia Mendez. I'm a school counselor at Furcrest and Mill Plain Elementary, so I'm certificated staff.
My name's Sierra Gerber, I'm an at-risk advocate at Y East, I'm classified staff.
My name is Cassidy Taylor. I represent Frontier Middle School and I'm a student stakeholder.
Hi, my name is Todd Murchison. I have a student at Frontier, Pioneer. I work at Silver Star and I represent classified staff.
Hello, my name is Jessica Murchison. I also have a student at Frontier and Pioneer and represent parent stakeholder.
Hello, my name is Amber Hall. I have a student at Union that also participates at Cascadia Tech and a student at Gila. So I'm a parent stakeholder.
Good evening, my name is Jermaine Williams. I have three kids at Marion Elementary. I represent the stakeholder group of being a parent, but also being a member of this Clark County Sheriff's Office. So I'm happy to know the efforts that we're making towards fentanyl education.
Hi, I'm Carol Flynn. I am, I have children at Fisher's Landing Elementary School as well as Mountain View. I'm here as a community stakeholder. I'm also an educator with ESD 112.
Hello, my name is Michael O'Parren and I'm a parent of a Pioneer Elementary student and I'm representing parent and community.
Good evening, my name is Angelica Buenrostro Floyd and I am a certificated dual immersion teacher, kindergarten teacher at Pioneer Elementary. And I also have three children, two at Frontier and one at Pioneer.
Not yet, don't say it yet. Thank you. This only represents, so we, this is 15 of our 29 members, okay? So we have 29. And you will have multiple opportunities for sure to be able to converse with and seek advisory from. These wonderful group of people, thank you all so very much for being here. Next on our agenda for a teaching and learning update is the magnificent Gay Lynn, who's going to update you on early learning. So she, ah, she is here. She's going to come up and do that for us.
All right, I have 10 minutes. Thank you for inviting me to come and talk about early learning. I am so excited to be here. I am going to give you an overview of our programs. I'm going to spotlight for you one of our newest programs. And I know you have questions for me. I also embedded a lot of really cute kid pictures, so hopefully you are inspired to come out and see these guys in action. So first, I want to give you a few stats around the children in our community. This information comes from the Support for Early Learning in Families State of the Children Report. It came out during the pandemic. There's an update coming out this next month. And from this data, we can confirm that we have more than half of the children who are birth to five in our community have both of their parents in the workforce. So more than half, about 53%. And of those families who need care outside of their home, less than half of them have access. So during the pandemic, we lost a third of our licensed childcare providers. Huge. You can look at this little graph up here and see that 1 in 10 have access to the licensed infant care. Four in 10 have access to preschool. And we know that having a high-quality early learning environment with positive responsive relationships and those early developmental environments that help kids be more ready for school and lasted throughout their entire adult life are so important. Our early learning community is also facing a lot of the same challenges that we're seeing in our schools. Shortages in the workforce, chronically, historically low pay for early childhood. And again, the loss of licensed, and then the impact of the trauma on children, on families and on staff. So kids come into us in school with gaps in opportunities and learning. And we see that in our Kinder Assessment WaH Kids that we take in the fall. This slide represents the percentage of children who are ready in six areas of development. And you can see for all of our students, less than half of them come in ready. And I've noted here that our children who are more vulnerable and furthest from privilege have even more disparity in their readiness. The WaH Kids assessment is correlated to third grade smarter balanced assessment. So more kids that are ready in all six of those areas are more likely to pass those ELA and math assessments. And we know what third grade assessments mean for high school graduation. So really, really important data around where our kids are coming from and the gaps that we see. We also have some data that we gathered the last several years around the preschool experience for our kids entering in kindergarten. So this slide shows all of our elementary schools and they are ranked by free reduced lunch rate as of this fall. So you can see Burton at our highest rate of free reduced lunch and Illahi below. The green bars represent the percentage of this year's kindergarten class who had preschool experience. And the blue bar represents the 2018 class. So you can see pre-pandemic rates. And you'll notice in nearly every case, they've fallen. The boxes at the top are our trend as a district. So when we were really trying to employ some early learning strategies and promote preschool enrollment at the school level, we saw some steady, small gains across some years from 2015 to 18. And then you can see this year's percentage, we dropped by about 13%. Couple of data points I want you to notice. Sifton and Sunset there, they just illustrate the big gap in the percentage of students who've had that preschool experience. And by the way, this doesn't say anything about the quality of the preschool, just preschool experience. And then I want you to notice Crestline. There's our outlier. 57.5% this year, 46 last year. Crestline had the privilege of starting a transitional kindergarten program last year. And if 15 of the 17 children who participated in that program came to kindergarten this fall, if I take those numbers out, Crestline would have been at 32%. Okay, and that's the program in the highlight for you, so hang on. All right, I put this slide in just to show you the framework that grounds our early learning goals and strategies in research, which is out of the P3 National Center. I also put it here to share my excitement that our strategic planning process will have an early learning embedded in that. And I'm so very excited. Rob was at our work group yesterday. Okay, so here are the preschool programs that we have on our school campuses. If you like charts, let's look at the visual. The columns that are blue, green and yellow, those are Evergreen programs. evergreen programs. And then you see our elementary schools listed, and some of our high schools. Our preschool programs run across three different departments. We have early childhood special education classes. We now have our transitional kindergarten program, we call Kinderbridge, with our elementary department. And we also have preschool programs associated with our CCTE departments at the high school. And then on the right, the orange and the purple represent our community partners that have preschool programs on our campuses. So Educational Opportunities for Children and Families operate ECAP and Head Start programs. Those are specifically for children and families who are at risk. And ESD-112 also has some ECAP programs on our campus. We also partner with them on an off-site within our district. What's really cool about these programs is we have been supporting more and more of them in inclusive environments. So our early childhood special education staff often co-teach and/or push in and support children within their community preschool. So that's where our programs are. Okay, so Kinderbridge. Kinderbridge, Transitional Kindergarten. We started last year with one class. This program is specifically looking to close a gap. We are looking for the children who have not had access to early learning experiences before. They're coming to us in kindergarten. We have a screening process, and we look for the kids who are most in need. So we started with Crestline last year. That program ran January to June. We added four more this year, and we have plans to add another one next year. We were able to access a competitive grant last year, and another one this year, that completely funded all of the classroom materials, equipment, resources, curriculum, and training for staff. Okay, so Crestline. Last January, we welcomed 17 children into Crestline who had not had kindergarten, or I'm sorry, preschool experience. They hadn't even had group childcare. The first two days of class was amazing. I was there. Litters of kittens comes to mind. They were awesome. So the WA Kids assessment is conducted in the transitional kindergarten class, and this chart above shows the data from that class. And the first, the green means they're ready. They're ready to come to kindergarten based on their age level. And then the yellow means they're not yet ready. And you can see that social, emotional, and math are the two areas, and this is historic for our entering kinders. Social, emotional, and math are low areas. So in January, that's where they stood. Had the teacher conduct that assessment again the first week in June. And here's our ready in social, emotional, and our ready in math. It's beautiful. I can also tell you that those kids came into Crestline as confident learners and leaders. And I know Nick Hanson can tell you some stories. It's great. As part of our grant, we have been involved in the National Pyramid Model Framework for Social Emotional Learning. This is a Washington State initiative, not only with OSPI, but with the Department of Children, Youth, and Families. It is rooted in research on best practices for social emotional learning and family engagement, and it integrates practices that are trauma-informed and have an equity and inclusion lens that's very strong. So here are some of the activities we've been involved with. It was actually really exciting, because we got in for the Transitional Kindergarten Grant, we were able to welcome every one of our early learning preschool programs and our partners into this training. And the vision of the state is that also all of our childcare and preschool community providers who are licensed would also be implementing these strategies. Our preschools would be implementing these strategies, and the National Pyramid Model is rolling their practices out pre-K through 3rd grade. So I have some dreams around that. And then our community early learning partners that we are collaborating with, they were a very important part of our transitional kindergarten process. We looked at enrollment trends. We looked at where the wait lists were. We looked at where families were not quite eligible. I mean, we really, really looked for those kids that were in the gap to get kids not only into our program, but to get kids into programs throughout the community. So I'm really anxious to see what our data looks like next fall for those preschool experiences. And then we're continuing to collaborate around ensuring that kids are getting into child find screenings for early identification, that we're working and providing more inclusive environments and settings, and that we're implementing those pyramid practices. And then transition to kindergarten, early registration. We're going to get more families registered earlier, so we can get a better idea of how that enrollment looks for us. Sent out some information just a week or two, a few weeks ago actually, around our dual-language immersion program. Have been visiting a lot of childcare centers around the parent groups around transition to kinder. And then our last big strategy is around family engagement. Early learning is just the prime opportunity to really build those positive trusting relationships with families. They are their children's first teachers. We need them as partners in their children's school experiences. So Pyramid Model Practices has a lot of really great parent resources that we are accessing through our teachers, working with their families. And then a couple of other pieces that are very effective. One is an app you can try out yourself. It's called Vroom.org. It was developed at the University of Washington with Bezos Foundation support, I believe. Child Development Specialists, they have developed this app. It has a very powerful message for parents. It's very positive. You have what it takes to build your child's brain. Here's how we can help you. And it focuses on early math, literacy, and executive function skills in the context of your everyday activities. And then we're also part of supporting the Dolly Parton Imagination Library with South Washington, where every child birth to five can get a book every month. All right, so what are your questions for me?
While they're thinking a little bit, Galen, first of all, thanks for your leadership. Glad to have you back in the saddle in this role, really leading our early learning. We did aggressively add some TK classes last year for, is that right? And that's a winning strategy. Early learning is a winning strategy if you want academic achievement for your students and success. We know the research says that. The legislature's slowing, kind of slowing things down a little bit on TK because of the costs. Everybody's taking advantage of it, and the costs have been greater than they anticipated. So it might be something we need to continue to lobby for, continued funding of our TK transitional kindergarten programs. They do work through apportionment, so when they, after they are enrolled and in the class, we were able to get apportionment from them, even though we got the grants. So the cost is minimal for the districts, and the rewards are beyond the cost. So it's kind of a no-brainer for us, but we are concerned that the legislature might be hitting the pause button because of the enormous costs and all the districts that have taken advantage of it.
Oh, I was just going to say that I like the idea of having the parent engagement tools, because, you know, there's a variety of reasons why, you know, kids can't go to preschool or be in part of the early learning. And so if we have the tools out there that they can access and get their kids ready, as much as they can.
I really did appreciate our meeting yesterday, developing a, I guess, a name for that pillar of the strategic plan, and then some objectives. And you told me something yesterday, was just yesterday, wasn't it? You told me something yesterday about the proportion of students served by EOCF and the ESD. It was a lot smaller than I thought. With private and, I guess, just the nonavailability, kind of adjusting the differences there. How many students are we able to serve in TK if it grows and gets funded?
We, the classes are capped at 18, so we have 80 slots, and we would add 18 more next year.
Okay, and percentage-wise?
Percentage-wise, we have just under 1,500 in a cohort of kinders. So it's a small percentage, but again, we're looking for that gap. What's nice, though, is in the collaboration, we really are having a lot of conversations with families, trying to get them into a program. And I'm working right now with Vancouver, Battleground, ESD-112, EOCF, and Innovative Services, and we're trying to make a regional application, where it would be, my family's interested in preschool for me, answer these questions for us. We'll hook you up with the right person, and we'll find the right fit for you. So rather than have an application that goes specifically to Head Start or ECAP, or trying to get kids we have concerns about into developmental screenings, and maybe special education services, or having families who are sure that TK, Kinderbridge, is their program, we'll look for that right fit. You know, and even in the Kinderbridge application process, I had conversations with many families that we recognized that they needed very comprehensive supports. They were families at risk, and I knew that Head Start or ECAP would be the right fit program for them. And so we were able to do that. And then conversely, we were able to look at areas where there were waiting lists, and ask EOCF or ESD-112 to release a child to us who was eligible for Kinderbridge, so that they could get another child off their waitlist. Yeah.
It sounds like the community lift is to reestablish a lot of these preschools that fell away during the pandemic. Is that right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Galen, very much. And I just want to mention also some partners in service, Bobby Height and Scott Monroe, who have also been supporting this work passionately, the three of you. So we thank you for, you know, keeping this work in the front and center, and thank you.
I want to acknowledge our early learning specialist, Tosa Jenna Kudimir. She's here supporting us.
Thank you, Jenna.
It looks great. All right, next up is Matters Reserved for Board Action. This is a first reading of our 2023-2024 school calendar. I believe that Janay is going to come up and talk about the calendar. We did this in a workshop at our last school board meeting, and so now it's being brought forward as a first reading.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Are we putting the calendar out? It's okay. I can just talk about the dates. The calendar that we are proposing for the 23-24 school year has a start date for students of August 30th, which is on a Wednesday. The last day of school we are proposing is January 12th, which is also on a Wednesday. The rest of the calendar is similar to the 22-23 school year, with the exception of just a change recommended for winter break, which would be a Wednesday beginning, which is December 20th, instead of the Monday before. It's just a real long winter break, since it goes after the new year rolls into that Monday. The only main change besides that is we have added in the Juneteenth holiday onto the calendar. Otherwise, we have all of our days that we have bargained for before school starts, and then our three snow makeup days. So the days on the calendar are what are before you. We have a committee that is working, and we are navigating, making sure we're meeting all the minimum instructional minutes, just verifying all of the times. And so we're going to continue that work over the next week or two. If we don't finish it by the next board meeting, we'll put second reading to the following meeting for you for approval. We want to just make sure that we've, that's okay, met all of the minimums that we need to, and give ample opportunity for feedback, should anything be recommended for change. It's okay. I think you have the calendar yourselves before you, and it's, nothing's changed from when we had a workshop a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you.
We did have a copy of the document at our workshop. So are there questions about the calendar? Just maybe, I have a question on the timing. We're going to bring it, if we vote to bring it forth, it will come back at our next meeting on the 14th. Okay.
We understand that it's later than normal. We're just trying to make sure that we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed, so we appreciate your patience with us.
Okay.
I know the questions are starting to come in. I've been asked a couple of times about the calendar.
What questions?
When is the first day of school?
Oh.
When is the, when are the breaks, as families are beginning to plan their year? So it's good we're doing this work.
All right, any other questions or comments about the calendar? Any questions or comments from the audience about the calendar? All right, then we will entertain a motion to bring it back for approval for second reading.
We advance the proposed school's calendar to second reading.
Move in second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great. All right, next up is the Good News Report. Craig's going to join us again.
Hello again. Thank you for having me again. Always my pleasure to share the good news from around the district. We'll start with something you guys discussed at the last board meeting, the Burton Elementary School ribbon-cutting ceremony. We have a wonderful video and pictures of that wonderful event inside, away from the rain, with a full house. And as Superintendent Boyd said, thanks to him screaming children at one point, very loud, but mostly happy children. Of course, last week, we had Monday off to remember Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and many of our schools also remembered Dr. King, including Cascade Middle School. They held an assembly to honor the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Students delivered speeches. There was a guest speaker, all remembering Dr. King, and also talking about the importance of moving Dr. King's work forward. A very special night at Heritage High School. They held their first-ever Holocaust Remembrance Night. And this was students from Robert Cozy's class on Holocaust and Genocide Studies. They came and shared personally created commemorative pieces of art and educational expositions about the Holocaust, to showcase the learning that they had experienced during the first semester. Also, a very special guest, Ada Van Dam died in 2021. She was a Holocaust survivor, but her daughter, Ina Marie Van Dam, came and shared the life of her mother as a Holocaust survivor. So very, once again, this was a first-time event at Heritage High School. Can only imagine how emotional and important that was. Then I want to talk about, of course, always like to point out when our schools are giving back. One of my favorite traditions is at Furcrest Elementary School. Before winter break, students collect thousands and thousands of items at Furcrest Elementary School, and my favorite part about it is kind of, the 5th graders kind of run the show. Every morning, the 5th graders go and collect all the goods on their carts and bags, and then they sort them. And if you've ever seen Furcrest Elementary School's library, right before holiday break, it's amazing to see all those cans lined up. Over at Marion High School, we have, I'm jealous of anyone's haircut, but Principal Schofers' hair, you can see right there, Jenna Schofers' hair is rainbow color. That's because she challenged her students to collect a certain amount of donations, and they went well past it. So they were told if they accomplished their goal, that their principal would dye her hair any color that they asked. Apparently, they asked for multiple colors, because she walked around her school with rainbow hair. And then finally, while you guys walked in this building, I just wanted to point it out, it's such a great addition to our building, the OSPI-winning Art Show Award winners from 2022, their work is now showcased in our ASC lobby. I think it's really elevated this already beautiful building, and it's really great to see the artwork back displayed here. I know I've appreciated, and so many other people, when they've walked in the lobby, or employees have pointed out how nice it is to be able to have these pieces of art from our students on the wall. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Board Comments. Comments by the school board?
I would like to say thank you to Clarissa for bringing the Equity Group here, and give a shout out to Mikhail. I was in the Equity Group the last two years, and it holds a very special place in my heart. I was in the parent stakeholder group, and it's just an amazing community, and I'm very jealous of everybody who gets to do it this year, for the next two years. And thank you for bringing them in, so we can meet them face to face. Thank you.
Yeah, that was good. I wanted to put a thank you out to John for a great presentation last Thursday, and we had nice attendance. Always want more, but you know what? People showed up, and that was great.
showed up, and that was great. And it was interesting to hear what people's questions were. This has been an interesting process. Having been through a superintendent search multiple times, I've seen every kind of way to do it. National searches, moving people up through our own system, bringing people in, you know. But what I will say is different this time is the amount of input we've had from the various stakeholders in the community. You know, different ways of communicating with us, and we're still getting things into the board. So I feel really good about that, that there's no one way that's the best way. That I have learned. And so it's, we just have to go with what we believe is right for our district and that. So we'll be coming forward at the next board meeting in February to make a final decision. And until then, we're accepting any input from anyone, and that's great. And I don't know if there's anything else anyone wanted to add.
John, I really appreciated how you tied in the strategic plan work with your presentation of the vision. I, when I see this stuff naturally approaching the words that we wrote in 2018 for our results policies and our other coherence governance policies, the people that you've brought together to shepherd us through this are just doing exactly the right thing, I think. And the focus has never been more completely on kids.
The other, oh, did you want to say something? The other thing, too, I wanted to bring up that kind of overlaps with what we were just talking about, is just the amount of opportunities that parents and community have to participate in the education process. I mean, we've had, you know, we've always had parent involvement, but it's getting more and more specific and has, and there's just so many places for a parent to plug in to the system. And I like it that it's represented in our strategic plan. But Clarissa's work with the advisory groups there, and then, of course, our students that are getting more and more involved in various ways. So the amount of input that we're getting across the board, not just on the superintendent situation, but on everything, is, we've never had it this broad before. And I really appreciate the effort that everybody's making because I know as a board, this has been very important to us, that we have this kind of atmosphere where parents feel connected to our schools and can participate in any way that they can. And so I thank you all for that. And I think that's it.
Well, I was going to say, I'm glad you brought that up, Victoria, because as part of this learning process, because obviously we're always learning, that more and more, like you mentioned, we're figuring out ways to get more and more voices heard and input. But we're going to continue, because I know that several board members sit on different committees with stakeholder groups. We're going to continue to do that work and have more opportunities where we can bring people in so we can get more feedback. Anyone else? Any other comments?
You want to talk about it at your service, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, yeah, I just, I appreciated a couple of things. I took an invitation to go and receive the speeches of Darcy Habrel's government class, the We the People program there, and got to hear some very passionate and informed opinions about government and about the history of the United States and where they think that things should go. I'd love to talk with any of you more about that, but I just, you know, you don't, I don't fear the future when I meet these kids. They're going to do it.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah. I was also at Burton, once again, for the Chartwell's At Your Service Program, where they teach a group of select fifth graders how to eat at a fancy restaurant. Atticite and protocol. And we were joined this time by, was it six police officers?
Five.
Five? We were at five tables? Okay, five police officers, each of them sitting at the table, and gave the kids an opportunity to ask questions. And the officers there received the questions with grace and answered them, and it was just really a good experience. I think the opportunity to do that in the first place actually comes from a change in the law that was passed a couple of years ago permitting police to come in and do this kind of thing in schools where they're given a meal or some donuts and so forth. So WASDA actually advocated for that and got the bill passed in 2019 or 2020. And for me, the prep work continues for the FRN delegation, which is leaving on Friday and Saturday for Washington, DC. And when we talk about the legislative update, I will show you what WASDA did to all that data that I prepared. It's beautiful. And you just got to see it because it makes it, you just got to see it.
Good.
And I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to join those strategic planning meetings, which, you know, produces this confidence that coherence in the district is building, and we're getting some inertia underneath it. And, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Next up is future agenda items. Is there anything we want to add to our work items? Good?
We do.
We do.
Yeah.
All right, next up is public comments. At this time, any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments are to be directed to the board of directors as a whole, may not be addressed to any individual board member, administrative staff, or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation if any. And it looks like we have Gary Wilson signed up this evening. Come on up, Gary. Good evening.
Yeah, thank you, board and Superintendent Boyd. I'm glad you guys were talking about five minutes ago about parents and how vital they are. And, you know, in line with that, I've asked for a couple of months now for this board to designate a Parents' Rights and Education Month. Other school boards in the state have designated a month. This would be in line with Policy 61 approved at the WASDA General Assembly September 30th, which basically stated that parents are primary stakeholders in their children's lives and education. You know me, I don't go away, so I'll keep asking until I hear a definitive yes or no. And I also ask if no, why, since this is in line with Policy 61. Parents are vital and not addressed in your SIP Student Improvement Plan, and without their increased involvement, you will not get the gains you need to be competitive with neighboring school districts like Camus. Again, just ask if you, why you might not want to designate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, and with that, we will go into a recess where the board will sign documents. We will reconvene for a board workshop where we will have another discussion around the enrollment presentation discussion. We will have a student board representative planning session, and then we will do legislative updates. Thank you.